Welcome to the January 12th, the Regular Meeting Planning and Zoning Commission. Will you please join me in rise, the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I say January 12th? I meant February 9th. You guys are all thinking I'm here for the wrong reason. All right. Roll call.
Kimball?
President?
Keen?
Here.
Ostemeyer?
Here.
Latham?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are present with the exception of Vicky Jo Carey, who is excused.
Excellent. Any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No.
No amendments? Fantastic. Ceremony appointments, announcements, or presentations?
Did want to make note that next month we'll be doing appointments for Planning and Zoning Commission and elections.
Okay. Good to know. One other quick note that was mentioned earlier, we do have five public hearings tonight, so make yourself comfortable. If you would like to speak or comment at any of these projects, please fill out the comment sheet located in the podium in the back of Council Chambers and turn it into Kelly at the front table. And for the public hearing portion of the agenda, before we open the public hearing on items that you wish to speak. So if you have not and do wish to speak either in favor, against, or neutral, please make sure and fill that out and turn it in. Do we have any declaration of conflict this evening?
I have a conflict on Allen Pot's special use permit, and I'll be recusing myself.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Noted. Consent calendar, minutes, and the Port au Prince special use permit findings and facts and conclusions.
I move to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Fantastic. Citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens who are wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on the agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meetings, agendas should be held for that meeting. Do we have anyone here tonight wishing to speak during citizen issues? None? Okay. That being said, we will proceed. We have no unfinished or old business, which leads us right into public hearing. So again, I know there are still some people that are filling out paperwork, but if you do wish to speak in any fashion, make sure and fill that out and get it to Kelly up front. So that being said, we will go ahead and start the first public hearing. The Villa's special use permit, SUP-15-04. Open that public hearing. Tavis Schmidt presenting.
Zero six.
Zeros. Okay. Zero six.
Sorry. Good evening, Commission members. Tavis Schmidt, Planner with the City of Post Falls, and I'll be presenting the Villa's special use permit, case file SUP-15-06. The requested action is to consider allowing construction of a multifamily development in the CCS, which is Community Commercial Services Zone, through the special use permit, and that would be, any development would occur at the R3 zoning standards. The location is a 3555 East Pole Line at the corner of Charleville Road. It's approximately 4.6 acres, and they're proposing to do 84 units with a clubhouse. Comprehensive plan designates the land for future land uses commercial. Currently, it's vacant. Water is Ross Point Water District, and it's, the parcel is provided with sewer by the City of Post Falls. As you can see here, in red is the subject property. Right there, we've got Pole Line along the south, Charleville Road along the east, and then we've got the Tullamore Development to the north. This is a county pocket area that's right there, kind of to the south. And Highway 41 is just, is adjacent to the east, not too far down there. In this area, we do have some other development, some apartments that are just finished construction recently in the Tullamore area. The surrounding zoning, the red is Community Commercial Services. The yellow is R1, Single Family Residential. There's a pink parcel to the west that's, and that's a limited commercial. And then the white is just county pocket, county area that had, would be have county zoning. Post Falls Municipal Code states that in order to construct a multifamily development and community commercial services, they need to obtain approval through a special use permit process, and that residential uses are allowed through that process under the R3 zoning. And you can refer to Staff Report for any exhibits and further information on that. This is a site plan of the proposed project. It's oriented a little bit strange, so we've got, north is actually pointing this way. So we've got Pole Line on this side and Charleville Road along here. And this is just a representation of the layout with the buildings, clubhouse in this area, parking lots. They provided landscaping along the north and the west property lines that would, adjacent to, this is another multifamily development here, and single family to the north. This is just another representation of the orientation, excuse me, of the proposed project with a vicinity map aerial shown there, just to give a better representation. North is up. This is a proposed, how the two-story apartments would be, the general appearance of them with the layout and floor plan. At this time, I'd invite the applicant to come up and speak in support of their project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Schreiber Way, City of Coeur d'Alene. Here tonight representing TCA Holdings for the special use permit request, as Tavis had said, for 84 units on about 4.6 acres. It's in the CCS zone. Very similar map to what Tavis had shown, showing the location of the project, Pole Line Avenue to the south, Charleville Avenue to the east, Highway 41 to the east. This is the Tullamore Planned Unit Development subdivision to the north. Again, this is the zoning, same map Tavis had shown earlier, red. All the property outlined in red is zoned CCS. The yellow is zoned R1. You have the light commercial over here. This is an important map, and I point, I want to point this out. Even though these properties are zoned commercial, these are all residential uses over here. This is Tullamore Commons Apartments. This is the Residence at Tullamore Apartments. This is the Prairie View Terrace condominiums. They're all high-density residential uses, even though they're in the commercial zone. The projects in Tullamore are under a PUD. That's how they've got it. I believe Prairie View went through the special use permit process to get their condominium. So my point is, is that this project, even though it's zoned commercial, is almost entirely surrounded by residential uses. I want to emphasize that this is not a part of the Tullamore PUD. This is a separate piece. It's not included within that PUD. It's not a part of that project at all. I just wanted to clarify that. There's a comprehensive plan analysis in the Staff Report. I believe that Staff feels that the project is in conformance with, with the comprehensive plan, the goals and the policies, so I won't go into that because it's in the Staff Report. Here's a layout of the subdivision. Sewer and water are currently available to the site in both Charleville Road and Pole Line Avenue. There are no issues there. We're proposing a 15-foot landscape buffer on the north side and on the west side in accordance with the Post Falls Municipal Code and the requirements for landscape buffering because it is a residential use in the commercial zone. Here's just a sewer and water layout. It's the same layout as before, just showing the sewer and the water layout. We think it's a straightforward project. We feel it fits with, with the community. As I said, it's completely surrounded by residential, by multifamily residential uses. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Dittman? Not at this time? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tavis, Staff Report.
Okay. So tonight, the application for a special use permit can be approved as presented, conditionally approved or denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission based upon the following four criteria from the Post Falls Municipal Code. So its implementation of special use will or will not conform to the zoning district. Staff comments are that it will conform to the purposes of the zoning district through the issuance of a special use permit, and it will be developed to the standards of the R3 zoning district. Number two, whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use established by the zoning district, and it is a proposed, the proposed use is allowable through the special use permit, and any site plan review will ensure further compliance to make sure that it meets applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations of the city and state. Whether the proposed use will, will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public and the vicinity of the proposal. Proposed use is compatible. It's located within the Highway 41 Commercial Corridor, and it is adjacent to corridor, and there's lots of development occurring in that area. The fourth and final is whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Permitting residential use in the CCS zone does comply with goals and policies within the comprehensive plan, and there is further analysis within the Staff Report. Engineering comments would be transportation. There's not going to be a significant impact to transportation facilities, and any impacts would be mitigated, and there are going to be some frontage improvements required. Water is provided by Ross Point Water District regarding water reclamation and sewer. The existing facilities are adequate and have current capacity for the proposed use. And stormwater would be reviewed at the time of site plan review. We received no comments from outside agencies or the public regarding this. At this time, are there any questions?
Questions for Staff? Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Testimony. Kelly, do we have any testimony in favor of the project?
We do.
Let's see. We've got an individual who does wish to speak in favor. William, is it Robinetti?
Correct.
Come on up. You have three minutes, sir. Once again, for the record, state your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Bill Robinett, 2441 Woodstone, Hayden Lake. Thanks for the opportunity to come and address you tonight. Hopefully, I can give you a little data that will maybe make your decision process a little easier. We did some research with regard to multifamily and apartment units in Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls since 2012. Since 2012, there's been 928 apartments built in the Coeur d'Alene city limits, 261 in Post Falls. That's a difference of 667 since 2012. Some kind of interesting data. Percentage of renters, percentage of the population in Cootenay County who are renters, 25 percent, meaning 25 percent of the people in Cootenay County rent as opposed to own. State of Idaho, the statistic is 30 percent. Spokane County, it's 37 percent. So it's significantly lower here than it is in the state, as well as Spokane County. Vacancy rates, Cootenay County, .7 percent. It's seven tenths of 1 percent. Spokane County, 3.3 percent. Population and projections. Cootenay County population, depending on the data and the source, is about 147, 148,000 people. The annual growth rate since 2010 for Cootenay County has been about 1.6 percent. The projected population in 2020 puts it right about 160,000 people. Spokane Pop, Spokane County, as just a point of comparison, 488,300 people in Spokane County. The annual growth rate is about .8 percent. So Cootenay County's growing almost twice as fast as Spokane County. In summary, there's been 667 more units built in Coeur d'Alene than Post Falls since 2012. Post Falls is growing at a 2.5 percent annual rate. Coeur d'Alene's growing at a 1.8 percent annual rate. The State of Idaho's growing at 1 percent annually. So if you extrapolate all that out and, and run the numbers, long story short, Cootenay County's going to need about another 1,000 apartment units by the year 2020. If you take 25 percent and just run that through as the, if the, Cootenay County's percentage of owners or renters, 25 percent, take that same statistic for the City of Post Falls, and I think it's pretty close, we're going to need about another 500 units in the City of Post Falls. So I just, it seems to me to be a pretty clear-cut case for the need for additional units. And I think this, this property, excuse me, is well-located, well-served. It's a good site for this use. Questions?
Questions? Yes. Can you cite the sources of your information?
Numerous sources. State of Idaho, Cootenay County, Vista, Department of Employment. It took a while to put it all together. It's all real data. I can provide it for you.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks.
Appreciate it, Mr. Robinett. Thank you. Kelly, any neutral?
We do not.
Okay. Any opposed to the project?
We do.
Okay. Okay. So we have four that wish to speak and one letter. We'll save the letter for the very end. And go ahead and start with Robert Wheelock. Again, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Robert Wheelock. My address is 3462 Galway Circle, Post Falls, Idaho. My house happens to be one of those residential lots just north of the project. When I purchased the lot and had the house built, I knew that that property was zoned commercial, community commercial. I knew that it had a pretty good chance of it being a single-level bill, a single-story building. I knew that we had a pretty good chance that it would not be occupied on weekends. And now they want to put apartments in there where at least eight of them will be overlooking my backyard. I find it offensive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Also to speak in opposition is Mr., is it Ignacio Chapa? Yes. Same thing, Mr. Chapa. State your name, and you have three minutes.
It's Ignacio Chop. I live at 3627 East Galway Circle. I don't have any fancy data to, to, to fight this, but I do live there. I paid a quarter of a million dollars for my house. Every, just about every house over there is worth a pretty, you know, pretty penny. I busted my butt. Eighteen years in the military. Went to school, got a degree, got out, got a job. I still work a labor-intensive job where I bust my butt every day to provide for my wife, as well as everyone else in the neighborhood. Every, there's already a set of low-income apartments that are right across the street, which I was not aware of. When we moved in, it's at 55 and up, it was in a retirement community, and somehow it became a low-income apartment complex. My friend, who's a teacher at Post Falls High School, makes too much money, at $32,000 a year, to afford an apart, to qualify for an apartment there. So it's, it's people with even less income than that. Then they're building more high-density apartments, which are stacked right on top of each other. The first set's not as bad because they're staggered. These are right on top of each other. They don't match the decor of the rest of the neighborhood. They're going to build, they have those other ones that are right there that are multicolored and stuff, and they're all stacked on top of each other. If you drive through there, it's almost impossible to, to drive around because of all the congestion of all the vehicles that are in that area. I'm just afraid that as I watch all these apartment complexes go up and all these, I don't know if it's going to be low-income or if it's going to be a high-dollar apartment complex. I'm not sure. All I know is I see the value of my property dropping, the value of the property of everyone else in that neighborhood dropping. So you, I'm for sure, I'm sure your minds have already made up and everything. But just remember, as you take the money out of the, the pockets of everyone in that community, you're filling the pockets of just one man that's building this apartment complex. I wish I had data to prove that we don't need it. I know for a fact it's going to be a lot more, more congestion, more traffic, and already a two-lane road right there that's Pole Line, it's already, it's already congested enough. The, the intersection there gets congested already. Trying to get out of church when I come from real life, it's almost impossible to try and cross the street there because you can't see around the gentleman's fence that lives on the corner. There's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic already right there. It's dangerous crossing that street, you know, without getting into an accident. And in the winter, it's very dangerous. There's always cars sliding around, and they slide right through that intersection. And because you have to try and pull up so close to see around the fence. The area is congested enough. The property values, I see my property value diminishing every apartment complex as goes up. There's more planned to go further up in the, in the area. I don't think we need it here. If we need more apartment complexes, there's plenty of other empty lots. There's already another one going up right down the street, right by the VA, by the American Legion in Fieldstone. So why do we need another one there? When we have one going up, we have those going up already. There's some there already. We don't need any more. That's, that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chop. I appreciate it. Next up to speak in opposition, Lou Barton.
Lou Barton. I live on Galway Circle, also on Tullamore. I won't repeat what we've already heard, but I will reinforce what we've heard. From my standpoint, zoning, one of the functions of zoning is, is to allow us to have balance in the community. And so I'm in a situation where I butt right up against this. I spent over $300,000 for my home and paid those taxes and everything. I'm retired. I think, as you just said, it affects the values of our properties, but I'm also looking at this. We've just added across Charleville Road, a large apartment complex. Congestion is true both on Charleville and Poleville, Pole Line for traffic at all times of year, and especially with the school there on Pole Line. A lot of traffic, both in wintertime and in summertime, or not in summertime with the school, but that's a high thoroughfare road through there. It's increasing even more with Greens Ferry entrance, you know, so we're pulling more traffic through this whole area again. We've seen, we've got the congestion, we've got the degradation of, of property values. We've got a situation where there seems to be, I would like to see statistics on this from the police department, how many calls they, they get from the apartments that are already there. In the past year, I can cite three to six times where policing, one murder occurred in the apartment complexes. We're pulling the entire area down. Also, this is very uncomfortable for me and many of the people who live in Tullamore who've made a large investment. For what purpose? For what purpose do we need additional apartments? I would say we should let some time pass, let this apartment complex, which is already constructed there now right east of Charleville Road, see what happens there, see what happens with traffic congestion, see what happens with police protection, see what happens for all the things which a community wants to be known for. And if it turns out that, that's, there's not going to be issues of the type that I anticipate based on the sampling we've already started to see, that would be a time for a different discussion. But at this point, does anybody know how many units are in this area just east of Charleville Road? Because there's a whole lot of units going in there right now, and they're all finished. They're not virtually finished. There's nobody living in them yet. But I say this is a big problem for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Last individual wishing to speak in opposition, Bob Flowers.
Good evening. Bob Flowers, 3914 East Maplewood Avenue, Post Falls. The gentleman that came up with all them wonderful statistics forgot to take one thing into account because his numbers are very accurate. But with the apartment complexes that are currently going up, this would make Post Falls have approximately 340 apartments now. So we are staying right there with Coeur d'Alene, even though every day I am very thankful I don't live in Coeur d'Alene. The units that I see going up on Pole Line, all somebody has to do is start at the American Legion and go east. Those new apartments that are going across, up right across from the American Legion, I don't care if you stack Honda Rosa Pine on top of each other. They're right on top of the street because they put a retaining wall there, and there's no way you're going to ever be able to cover those apartments. But if you actually look what's going on from that point all the way east, there is more than enough apartments in that area. In fact, there are too many, in my opinion. On top of it, I'm looking at their diagram for their units, and there's no place for these kids. Apartments bring in kids. Young families starting out, they want an apartment? They got kids. There's nothing there. There's no parks. There's no open space whatsoever in that unit. There's a clubhouse. Yahoo. This is supposed to be kind of a homegrown unit, this TCA Holding LLC, Tennis Corp. of America. They own quite a bit of property around the U.S. They got a fairly good reputation. I don't see any tennis courts in here, though. I don't see much of anything besides more apartments, more people, more traffic, that you're dumping everything, all these apartment complexes are dumping all that traffic out on Highway 41, which is already congested like nobody's business. We zone that as commercial for a reason. And that reason was to bring jobs, bring futures- And that reason was to bring jobs, bring futures for the people here, not to continuously clog up the area with unneeded apartments. And I, for one, believe that high-density housing does not belong in Post Falls in the least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Last is a letter in opposition of the Villas, to whom may concern this letter is to let you know that Manfred Lacam and Nancy Lacam do not approve of the TC Holdings LLC request for special use permit to construct an approximate eighty-four apartment units and a clubhouse project in the community CCS zone located, general location of three-five-five-five East Pole Line Road in Post Falls, Idaho. We feel this project would decrease the property value of the homes located in Prairie View Estates and elsewhere near the area, and feel that it will greatly increase the amount of traffic on Pole Line Road. Sincerely, Manfred and Nancy. Favor, neutral, and opposed this time would be Mr. Dittman.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Again, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, for the record. Need for apartments, I think Mr. Robinett's statistics speak for themselves. We obviously feel there's a need for apartments, both in Coeur d'Alene and in Post Falls. And it's, it's obvious by the number of apartments that are under construction right now. Residential and the commercial CCS zone isn't allowed use through the special use permit process, that's what we're here doing. We feel we do meet those requirements for a special use permit. Yes, that property is owned CCS, you could do a number of things there in the commercial zone. Commercial zone allows a multitude of projects, residential uses being one of them. Low-income housing, I think some of the people mentioned, no, this is not low-income residential, it's not subsidized. It's very similar to the products that are going in across the street that are under construction right now. Right here in the residence at Tullamore, here's a rendering of what's going on. It's a very similar product to what was put, the same developer built some of these units in Coeur d'Alene. Here's some pictures of the ones that were completed in Coeur d'Alene. We think it's a quality project, it's not low-income, again, it's not subsidized. Traffic was another issue. I would just defer to the staff report and your engineering staff, who says that, and I quote, "The proposed use would not have a significant impact to adjoining transportation facilities." So I don't think there's gonna be any, any traffic-related issues. I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Dittman.
Do, are, where's the ingress egress? I'm having a hard time.
Okay. Go back one more. This is Pole Line Avenue here, this is Charleville. So we're proposing two ingress, a full-turn movement off of Pole Line, and a right-in, right-out off of Charleville.
Okay.
So if I go back, Nancy, to this exhibit, you'll have one entrance here, and one entrance here.
Okay.
And the Charleville's right-in, right-out?
Charleville's right-in, right-out, because there's a center median in Charleville that's fully landscaped, it does not allow full-turn movements, it's very similar to what happened across the street, the way the intersections line up, it just doesn't allow full-turn movements.
Anything else?
I do have one other question. Are there garage units on these?
Yep, and of course, I didn't bring any pictures of it.
I just saw it in some of the...
It is on, I believe Tavis had one of the pictures showing the front elevation.
Right, yeah.
So there's garages, each unit, there's six units per building, each unit will have a garage underneath in the front of the units. So this, this picture's actually, oops, this picture's actually looking at the back of the unit, so these are the patios in the back. The garages on the front side are all on the front, so each unit will have its own garage.
Will have a one-car garage, and then an additional parking space?
In front of the garage, correct.
Okay, okay.
That's, yep, so that's what all these are, right here is additional parking in front. Plus, you've got a bunch of additional parking in front of the clubhouse, and additional parking here.
So only six units per building?
Correct. There's fourteen buildings, each, each building will have six units.
Okay.
Anything else for me?
And what's the green space between the buildings? How much is there?
So, there's twenty-five feet here, there's about forty feet here, and then we've got a fifteen-foot landscape buffer, as required by your ordinance, around the entire outside of the project. So there's a rather large, for an apartment project, there's a lot of the large green space here, we've separated the buildings out. I think it's important, too, to remember, you know, the proximity to Tullamore and the parks that are gonna go into Tullamore. There's a major park that's gonna go in Tullamore, not even a quarter-mile away. Okay, right here.
So just so I'm clear, I'm sure that there's a, I know that there's a certain amount of vegetation that you have to put in for the buffer. How tall is that?
I would defer that to your plant stuff, I don't know that off the top of my head. Your buffer requires a six-foot fence, John, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, six-foot fence.
And then I don't know the height on the landscaping.
There's so many trees for every hundred feet, deciduous and evergreen trees.
Okay.
And so...
And they don't have to be a certain height at planting, they just...
No.
Okay.
They'll just grow to whatever their maturity, eventually.
They have to be a certain caliper thickness, if I'm not mistaken.
In the right-of-way, there's a caliper, and the site plan review standards, I don't remember.
A six-foot fence, and then vegetation on the interior of that, or the...
The vegetation will be on our side of the fence.
Okay.
The apartment's side of the fence.
Yeah, so being a knot in the right-of-way, I don't recall a caliper standard. There is for like, a shade ordinance tree, there's a caliper standard, but for the buffer, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, that was, that answered it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions for staff? Do we have any questions for staff?
I do have a quick question for John. You know what the commercial vacancy rate is, roughly, in the city of Post Falls? Off the top of your head, I know I'm catching you off-guard, so if you don't know, it's fine.
I don't know off the top of my head, I do know that it was, was less than, last I recollected, I think it was, it was double-digit, I believe.
Okay.
We'll be going to the Cootney County Forum here, I think, this Thursday, I'll bet y'all get updated stats. I actually haven't looked at that stat in some time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Tavis or John? Nope? Okay, that being said, we'll close the public hearing for special use permit one-five-dash-zero-six, and have discussion. Warren, we'll start down with you, sir.
I think the rebuttal evidence was compelling. I am concerned that there's a lot of the low-income apartments in that area, and quite a few units being built just along Pole Line. I've been through that area, and there is quite a bit of congestion, and it, you know, may come to changing of the roads, those kind of things. But I think there's a very nice presentation that these apartments are not gonna be low-income, and be helpful to the neighborhood.
Couple things. I think some of the numbers were pretty telling. The vacancy rate, the point-seven percent vacancy rate in Cootney County for multifamily versus ballpark double-digit commercial vacancy rate in the city of Post Falls, at least that says to me that, commercial in Post Falls, for commercial uses, is overbuilt, there's too much of it, too much on the market, and the point-seven percent vacancy rate, which is almost nothing, for, for multifamily speaks volumes to the need. When it comes to traffic, and the impacts of traffic, I believe the city of Post Falls' total impact fees per unit for apartments is a little over twenty-four-hundred dollars per apartment. And a good chunk of that goes to transportation. And so, I feel confident that with the impact fees, that traffic, that traffic mitigation will be handled by the city, and as well as the fact that Pole Line will be widened across the front edge, which will help that part as well. So, I think it's a nice little apartment complex, I think it's got, it's a nice location, it's close to schools, it's close to parks, it's got great access onto two major collectors. So I think it's a great location for it.
Mr. Latham?
I remember a time when, when we were very concerned about the CCS zoning being gobbled up by multifamily and residential, and we're, we're starting to see a little bit more of that again, so I'm, I'm always a little bit cautious. However, in this case, if you just look at the master, big-picture area, Highway forty-one is a commercial corridor, and really, it's all residential on both sides, up and down the street, until you get closer to Highway forty-one. So, it's, it's surrounded, and it's probably the best fit at this point for allowing multifamily in that zone. That's my two cents.
Fred?
I can see where the CCSs have provided some opportunities for some, but yet some negative opportunities for others. And I, I would hope that's something we could address in the future, or the city could address in the future. I do pay a lot of attention to testimony by citizens in Post Falls, but I also believe that we have to follow the regulations as they are stated, and that kind of puts a handcuff of what we can do and what we can't do. So, I would rather see commercial there, as stated, but in this case, it appears that we'll have to follow the, the presentation as stated by the, by the staff, so.
Okay. Nancy?
I agree. I, and I do like the overall look of the plat, I like that it's, that there's only six units per, per building, I like that there's garages, I think that that's all a plus, I think it makes it a little more upscale, as far as multifamily housing goes.
And I would just say that I, before Mr. Robinett came forward with statistics, I'd seen some, and was always surprised at how few apartments were available, not necessarily pushing for huge multifamily, and I do have a genuine concern for the traffic, regardless of what is stated on paper, it's what you see on a day-to-day basis. So, there definitely is some concern with, with traffic. However, if you look at the fit, it, there is a fit there, so. That being said, I would entertain a motion. By anyone. I'm sorry, any commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of SUP fifteen-dash-zero-six, Villa's special use permit, I move to approve the special use permit, adopting the findings and conclusions and conditions as presented in the staff report.
I second.
First and second, and Kelly?
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ostermeyer?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so moved, special use permit dash-one-five-dash-zero-five, I do have that number right. We'll go ahead and open that public hearing.
Give these folks a moment. Tavis Schmidt, City of Post Falls, presenting Alan Potts special use permit, case file SUP fifteen-dash-zero-five. This is, the requested action is to consider allowing construction of a multifamily development in the CCS zone through the special use permit at the R-three zoning standards. This project is located at forty-two thirty-seven East Pole Line Avenue, approximately eight acres. The proposal is for a hundred-and-forty-four multifamily units. The existing comprehensive plan designation is a mix of commercial and residential for future land use designation. Currently, it's mostly vacant land with one single-family residential on a portion of the property. Water is provided by Ross Point Water, and sewer is available through the city of Post Falls. Here's the surrounding environment, in the red is an approximation of the subject property. Forty, Highway forty-one is to the east, to the west, excuse me, here. We've got Buckstale Development to the east, this is county property here, we've got a county pocket up here, and then this is all within the city of Post Falls. The surrounding zoning, this is all within CCS zoning here, we've got CCS in the Highway forty-one commercial corridor, some single-family residential R-one designation to the east and northeast there, and then county is in the white area. Post Falls Municipal Code just states that multifamily residential can be approved through a special use permit within the CCS zone, and that any development of the multifamily would be done at the R-three zoning standards. Right here, this is the proposed project, there's two components to the proposed project. Within the yellow boundaries is the apartments, the residential. The remainder of it, this is forty-one right here, and this is Pole Line, the remainder is for future commercial development. PAD development of assorted retail office uses, other uses that are allowed within the CCS zone outright. This is a architectural rendering of the proposed apartments, they are proposed to be three-stories in height. Right here, and at this point, I would ask the applicant if they would like to come up
Commissioners, my name is Todd Whipple, and I'm with Whipple Consulting Engineers. I'm here to briefly speak to you about this. I want to, my glasses on first, or I can't see anything, sorry. This is the second of these, apparently, before you. Pardon me, just wanted to say, hey Drew, you're on a roll, come on up here and wrap this up for me, but I won't do that, I'll just embarrass him a little bit. So, our proposal's a little bit different. Can you go back to the one with the gold?
Yes.
There. This is a, we're proposing an eight-point-five acre request to change to multifamily. We are leaving commercial along Highway forty-one. You know, during the debacle, the, the use for commercial, or the call for commercial has changed a little bit. Prior to the recession, there were a lot of strip centers that were built, that were probably overbuilt in just about every community, not just here, Coeur d'Alene, Spokane, but pretty much nationwide. And so, what's happened is, is there's, there's a couple things, there's, there's strip centers, there's boxes, there's different-sized boxes, there's different depths for each box, and then there is rooftops, and how many shoppers are there? And so, in an area like Post Falls, where you have a pretty large commercial footprint, what happens is, you just don't have enough rooftops. And so, what we're proposing then is, is to take a portion of the CCS zone, keeping the portion along Highway forty-one, which is the most advantageous to PAD development, not strip center development, but PAD development, and then take the remainder and propose multifamily on it. We're proposing in this eight-point-five acres, approximately one-hundred-and-forty-four units of multifamily. These are, I would consider them, you see lots of them around, more of the three-story, we walk-ups, as we've always called them, garden-style, I think, is the appropriate term. They are individually surrounded by parking for the units themselves, there's garages around the extent to minimize impact, any additional commercial that might come in. And I think the architect that we worked with has done a pretty good job in overall laying out this apart- laying out this apartment site to retain adjacent CCS zoning without very little impact, including that piece in the county that hasn't yet quite come in yet, and still provide, what we're looking at here is kind of a walkable community back towards these pad units that will be constructed along Highway 41. The, the advantage that we have, and I think in all development, is do we put commercial next to residential? Is it okay to put medium, big box, commercial next to single-family residence, or should there be a transition zone? So one of the things that apartments provide is they provide a natural transition zone between commercial, especially commercial fronting a highway, Highway 41. The commercial provides a buffer to the multifamily, as well as the buffer provides a buffer, I mean, the multifamily provides a buffer from the commercial to any additional residential or commercial that might come along behind this project. You know, we've reviewed the staff report and the conditions, and we have, we accept those, we have no request to change those. Overall, we believe that the proposed project complies with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, the proposed land use is compatible with the land uses in the vicinity, and the proposed use is an allowable use, allowable special use in the zone. We believe that the addition of multifamily into vicinity of pedestrian-friendly commercial promotes non-vehicular access, as well as provide the necessary rooftops to support additional proposed commercial endeavors. We recognize, and I would hope that, that as it relates to impacts from this development, I think it was noted earlier, that this project will pay nearly $2,400, the apartment project would pay, in impact fees, which would garner approximately $336,000 in impact fees to the City of Post Falls through that program. Much like all development and impact fees, sometimes, should you put the horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse, sometimes you've got to have development go through to collect funds to build the things that you need to allow additional uses to come in. So your system is an impact fee system, you acknowledge that. We don't always have the money to build it, but we'll get money from you, we'll use that as seed money to go to the developments and the improvements that we need to do. Multifamily apartments generate less traffic than commercial, based on square footage versus number of units. That's just kind of the way it works, they use less water than single-family residential. And overall, we believe this is a, an appropriate use for the area. It will marry some rooftops adjacent to pad-ready commercial development, and ultimately provide for a little bit more of a walkable community in this area than perhaps you might have along the Highway 41 corridor. At that point, I will complete my presentation.
Questions at this point? No?
I actually do. So those are actually garages on the perimeter, or little storage units, or?
Garages.
They're actual?
Actual garages, yeah.
Like you can drive in?
Drive in, pull the garage door down.
Okay.
You can rent them for storage units, if you want to do it that way, do whatever you want.
Would they, so they wouldn't belong to each unit? That, that would be, they would be independent?
You know, our company does a lot of apartments, probably two to 3,000 units a year, and I will tell you, I have seen it go both ways. If you, some of our developers will use garages to fulfill the need for surface parking, and so they charge a little bit more market. These will be market-rate apartments, it won't be low rent, low, lower mid, middle-income apartments, they'll be market-rate apartments. And so sometimes they'll include their garage in your unit, and that way you get a surface parking space and also a garage space. Sometimes they rent them, it's $25 extra a month.
Okay.
There's a lot of different ways that they can do it.
Okay. Do you know how many garage units are that there, this is set up for, or it's all right if you don't?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, okay.
I know that it parks really well. You know, one of the problems with apartments as a whole is there's lots of codes promoting fewer parking spaces, and unless you're in a completely walk, walking environment, like maybe downtown Seattle, even parts of Spokane, Coral Lane wouldn't apply for this, you really need to get your 2.1, 2.2, 2.3 car parks. It's just kind of the nature of the beast. If you underpark, you underfill, and so I will say that between the surface parking and the garages, I know that we park up pretty well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question.
Sure.
That's, so that's two parcels, two pieces of property, it looks like?
Correct.
And so?
There's actually, I think there's actually three parcels here.
There's three, okay. So what you're asking for tonight, is that all one parcel, or is that comprised of more than one parcel?
You know, I'm, I can't answer that, I'd have to almost defer to staff. I probably should be able to answer it, but I can't.
Any other question?
This is out currently in vacant property. I think they said there was one single-family residence out nearby, and it looks like an awful small green space for that number of apartments.
This green space right here?
Right.
You know, that green space is going to wind up being about 100 by about 200, maybe 120 by 200, it's going to actually be fairly large, it'll be over half an acre of green space. So it, you have to remember, these buildings are shown at between, I don't know which exactly footprint this is, but they're between 80 and 180, or 80 and 200 feet long. And so when you add the parking on both ends, and the 20 feet between the end of the building, it starts to get to be a pretty long piece, so it might be, you know, 20, 40, 60, 80, 250 to 260 feet long by a little wider than the building, so maybe 80 to 100. So it gets to be a fairly large piece of property for open space, I think. There's a clubhouse here, it doesn't really have a lot of amenities, other than those amenities that would be offered inside the clubhouse, such as a meeting room, a reception area, things like that. I don't think this one is proposing a pool, so it has a patio, so they can do events within the facility, so. Anything else?
Anyone?
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
So the application for a special use permit can be approved as presented, conditionally approved or denied by the Planning and Zoning, Zoning Commission. So again, implementation will or will not conform to the zoning district. Staff feels that it will conform with the issuance of a special use permit, and develop to the standards of the R3 zoning, which, by the way, an R3 zoning allows a maximum of 18 units per acre, and this project is no more than 18 units per acre, as proposed. Two, whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use. It is an allowable special use on the land use table. Site plan review will ensure further compliance with any of the regulations or ordinances of the city. Whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and with land uses in the vicinity. Again, this project is also within the Highway 41 Commercial Corridor, lots of development going on there, high traffic. It's a logical location, get people out, and then to the highway, out to their jobs and places of employment. Four, whether the proposed use will or will not be, will comply with the goals of the comprehensive plan. Permitting residential use in the CCS zone does comply with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and there's further analysis within the staff report. Engineering Division comments, the proposed use will not have significant impact to transportation facilities, and any impacts would be mitigated with frontage improvements to Pole Line Avenue. Water's available, the existing sewer facilities are adequate and have current capacity for the proposed use, and any stormwater would be reviewed at site plan review. We received no comments from outside agencies, and one comment was received from a citizen, and that is included as a attachment to the staff report. Do you have any questions of, from me?
Questions for staff?
So I kind of had the same question as far as, so that, where the, where the yellow is outlined?
Uh huh.
Okay, that is the, the 8.35 acres?
Yes.
Okay, and then what's outside of it that shows developed, which they're not going to develop right now, that's an additional 3.3 and a half acres-ish, or something like that?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, so there's two parcels inside the, the yellow outline?
Yeah, there's, the, the, yeah, there's, I have to go back, I think, to... So you can see here, there's actually a parcel line going up right, right in this area.
Oh yeah, okay.
So this is one parcel, and that's where the single-family residence is, and then this is another parcel here, and then there's actually a third parcel on the corner of Pole Line and 41.
Okay.
So when you give that address for this, that would be probably the parcel to the east, I would imagine?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's where the existing single-family is, that's in this area right here.
So that may get some kind of a boundary line adjustment, or something like that?
Yeah, during site plan review process, we would, we would look at, at that, and recommend a boundary line adjustment over to here, so that the multifamily would end up all on one parcel.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Tavis, thank you. Testimony. Kelly, do we have anyone in favor of this project?
Yes.
Okay, so we have two that wish not to speak that are in favor. Lifetime resident of the area and professional consultant on demographics, employments, and accessibility issues, very much for housing issues and general public need. The other piece of that is the area is changing and growing. The use fits the zoning, apartments lend themselves to that area. So those are the two that are in favor. We have one individual who wishes to speak, Wayne Humphrey. If you come up, name, address, and you have three minutes, sir.
All right. Thank you, everyone. My name's Wayne Humphrey, I live at 4237 East Pole Line. I am the one residence that's in this corner right here. I've lived there since 1961, and I've watched Post Falls grow, you know, from a small town to a good-sized city. And the, the Highway 41 corridor, everything's moving north, and I just feel that this is going to fill a void. And, you know, in an area, it's not rural anymore, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey, appreciate it. Kelly, any in neutral?
We do not.
Any testimony opposed? Okay, two opposed that wish to speak. Mr. Flowers. Mr. Flowers, I apologize, but once again, name and address, and then you'll have three minutes.
Bob Flowers, 3914 East Maplewood Avenue, Post Falls.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, here we are again, on Pole Line, another large apartment complex. This one happens to be on the east side of Highway 41. We didn't fill in enough on the west side. The statistics that the gentleman gave earlier, they were all well and good, like I mentioned. The number of apartments, he didn't take into consideration, though, the amount of apartments that are being built at this present time. Also, the vacancy rate, he did not take those apartments that are being built at this time into consideration when he gave you a .7% vacancy rate. There are a lot of apartments coming up in line. All you'd have to do is look back in your records and see what you've been approving. Once again, they're going to dump every bit of this traffic, 144 units. Say they take two cars per unit, another 288 cars jumped right out on Highway 41 again. You know, people keep saying, well, we're going to enlarge this, we're going to enlarge that, coming down the road, this will get bigger. Well, that is down the road. What about the people that live here now, that fight that miserable 41 traffic every single day? You try to get from 41 across S L Ts, and you can sit there 15, 20 minutes sometimes trying to get through a light, especially if you're there at 3:30, 4:30 in the afternoon. And this traffic has backed up, I mean, I was raised here, I went to school here in Post Falls, and I remember when 41 was just our shortcut, so we didn't have to go through Coral Lane and, to cut up north. Now it is a freeway, and even though it's designated a little state highway, it needs to be widened. Things need to improve along the corridor before we keep approving all these projects. Do you realize that if you approve another 144 apartments, you're going to put your numbers right up there with Coral Lane? And I don't know about you, but I don't want to live in Coral Lane. Post Falls has always been a very comfortable town, and I'd like to keep it that way. And putting more high-density apartments in this, in this area is just not called for right now. And I would like you to really check your numbers, because the gentleman that got up here and spoke for the project had a whole lot of, well, I'm not sure, I don't know, I'm not sure how many garages, I'm not sure exactly what this and that. Well, make them come back to you with some solid numbers, and a traffic study that's recent, not this one that they used to say that there's no, there's not going to be any significant impact, because the Fox, Foxtail, anyway, the, that housing project out there, that's more than likely the traffic study they're using. Well, there's been hundreds of apartments approved since then. Really check your numbers before you go and approve another 144 units, because I think they may surprise you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. One more speaking in opposition, and that is Annette, is it Hazalone?
Hazalone.
I tried to get close. Thank you. Again, state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Annette Hazalone. I live at 4353 East Pole Line Avenue, Post Falls, Idaho. And that's that little piece of county, that they call me the, the last little holdout on this, on the side of Pole Line, where they want to put the 144. I'm Wayne Humphrey's neighbor. I bought that piece of property from his mom and dad, many years ago, and it was just this beautiful, wonderful community out in the rural area. I moved there to get away from high density. I've lived in high density. And what people don't, are not taking into account is what high density brings to you. It brings you crime. Not all people that live in high-density areas are criminals. I know this to be true, but there is a lot of crime that comes with it. When you start cramming people together, there, there's a lot more stress, there's fights over children, there's all kinds of things that happen. So I don't speak about high density out of, you know, ignorance, I've lived it, and it is not a good thing. They're talking about building a three-story apartment complex that is right next door to my property. I have grandchildren and children that live in this area. They're taking not only the land values that we bought, when we originally bought it, but they're taking away the pride of homeownership. Well, we don't care what you think or what you say, we're going to approve high density. Well, my grandchildren go to the schools here in Post Falls. You bring 144, plus all the other ones, apartments that you're bringing into this area, you're going to dump a whole bunch of kids into schools that are already too full. Now, everybody's talked about, you know, the, the traffic on Pole Line. Well, I've seen it. I have this big, beautiful driveway where the bus pulls in, pick up my grandkids, take them to school, and now I've got people up from Foxtail, which I came and spoke against when they were talking about building that. Well, those kids cut across- Well, those kids cut across my property to go to catch the bus. Well, you know, that means that I'm going to have to come up with the money to put up a fence so that the kids have to come down the proper way instead of cutting across my property. People have been that live in Foxtail, they just go over onto our property without any permission, no worries about trespassing. You put 144 apartments next to my property, that means I'm going to have to spend $20,000 to put up a security fence. Who's going to pay for that? Is Allen Potts Development going to pay for that? Is Post Falls going to pay for that? And you know what's funny is in Cootney County, you can only have so many bathrooms on a five-acre lot. You know why? Because of the water table. It's to protect our water table. Well, these water tables are already being taxed, and they want to put all these extra apartments on there to tax it some more? That doesn't sound right to me. You might think that I'm here to speak to you out of pure selfishness, but I'm not. There is some real statistics, but I'm not going to go into all of those because you've been having a lot of those thrown at you already. But it's not just selfishness because, you know, there is a little bit of that because I own the property right there. But it's also taking a look at what it's going to do to our schools. Pole Line, people are driving down Pole Line from 41 going to Hutter at 60 miles an hour. You want to have all these kids put into the area with people driving 45, 60 miles an hour down this road? How many children are going to get hit? It's astronomical, the odds. And one last thing before I let you go. They say, "Okay, well, you know, we're going to mitigate this problem with Pole Line by widening it." That means that everyone that lives on Pole Line that owns property is going to be forced to sell a little piece of their property in order to build a bigger road. And that is so someone who is in Allen Potts Development LLC is going to stick more money in their pocket. And I don't think that's right. I think that we really need to take a look at this, and I don't think it's the right spot. It's like trying to put a square peg into a round hole on Pole Line and 41. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebuttal from the applicant.
Commissioner's Todd Whipple again. You know, I don't really have that much. You know, staff has reviewed it. We understand there'll be an impact fee. We know that traffic is bad. Traffic is there, but traffic is there now. Sometimes the only way to solve a solution is to collect some money to move forward on trying to remedy the issues that you have. And I, as the applicant's representative, I can't stand here and speak to you with the passion that the people who are being affected by the project can. That's just an impossibility. I can only sit here or stand here and talk to you about what we know about the project, the things that we talked to with staff, the requirements that the city has placed on this kind of a change in use, and we have accepted those. And the reason that we accept those is because we know that that's an ability for us to limit impacts to any adjacent properties. And so, you know, we, the conditions will require a fence, a six-foot fence. We will have garages on the perimeter to continue to provide a separation between the living units and any adjacent properties. We have the same landscape requirements that all the projects like this have to have. And so, obviously, this isn't my first hearing standing before a hearing body. And so, I can only say that multifamily, I believe, is a less intense use than a highly-developed commercial piece of property. And you can drive up and down Mullen to understand what a highly-developed piece of property is that has a commercial use on it. And having done projects like that, I would tell you that residential is residential is residential. And so, while there are different forms of residential, the reason that we're building apartments is because there's a need, and there's always, there's a need. You know, you're seeing probably an uptick in subdivisions. There were changes in federal lending codes that allowed lots to be sold easier and houses to be purchased easier, and now it's much more restrictive. And there are just not as many other opportunities for people as there used to be. So as long as Post Falls is going to be a community that's a desirable living atmosphere, there's people that want to live here. And so, right now, its apartments are filling that need. And as time goes by, maybe we'll go back and build more subdivisions, and then you'll hear the people who live on the prairie who don't want more subdivisions. So it's just kind of, I think, the development cycle. And right now, it's rent apartments in a commercial zone. So unless you have any additional comments, I think that's it.
Any other comments for applicant?
So the fence is a six-foot fence between the garages and the adjoining property. Is that surrounding the entire property?
You know, I have to plead a little bit of ignorance here. I know that Mr. Flowers kind of jumped on me for that. I have an individual in my office who, this is his project, and I have, while I try to keep up on everything, I do not know every specific answer to every specific question. I can ask Tavis to answer that question for me because I don't specifically know the answer. My presumption would be that there'd be a fence around the entire property because we're asking for a special use inside the CCS, but I think I'll have to defer to staff to answer that specifically.
And the garages that pretty much by the diagram go all the way around, are those shed roof or slope roof?
You know, I don't think there were any examples. My understanding is they're pitch-druff garage, just like a residential-type garage would be. So, yeah, not shed roof. Pitch-druff. So I'm sorry, I can't answer the fence for sure. Have to ask staff.
That being said, we can actually move right into questions for staff. So Tavis, you want to address that? Thank you, sir.
Okay, so with the garages, City of Post Falls does not have architectural standards for the garages or anything. So at this time, there's no information regarding the appearance of the roof or anything with the garages. With the fencing, the, all of this property is currently zoned CCS. The property to the east is in the county, to the north is in City of Post Falls, and that is also CCS zoning. There is no requirement to provide any extensive landscaping buffer between the zones. It's compatible zones. Everything in there is all commercial zoning. It's just we have a high-density residential use proposed on this section of the property to the north would be something else that the community commercial services allows. If there were to be fencing, it would most likely just be along with the garages in this area. Along here, this is actually, could not have any fencing along this area because this will, Ketchikan Court to the north, this would be traffic flow to come through Ketchikan Court to Pole Line and to serve the future retail development there.
Can I add a comment?
Please.
You could, if you considered, if it was your choice to go down an approval, condition the approval on requiring a fence at locations deemed appropriate.
Any other questions for staff?
Do you know how many separate parcels are in that pocket?
Within the yellow area?
Within the county pocket that...
I believe it's just one. Let me go back. So in this area, this is all county, so this is one parcel right here.
When we saw that map where it was yellow, wasn't the little pocket...
Going around? That's, there's a little...
Right there, right there.
That's within the city limits.
Oh, that is within the city limits.
Yeah, that's City of Post Falls there. So this black line is actually the city limit boundary.
Okay, and it's that parcel on the other side?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
That's like a county peninsula there.
Okay. And you don't know it's just one parcel, you think?
Yeah, on this map, on the, kind of the beige or gray lines, those are parcel lines. And so by this, it's one parcel there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Commissioners, I might volunteer. I know there was a question about the number of apartment units zooming in on the site plan. It appears there's 116 for the garages.
116 garage spaces. Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Close things out?
Can I ask one other question? What's the height of, what's the overall height?
Well, the maximum height in the R3 zoning is 45 feet. So they would be limited to no higher than that.
Okay, okay. That's it.
Anything else? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and start with discussion. Nancy, we'll start down at your end.
I, I think if there wasn't a need for apartments, they wouldn't be building them. With that said, I, I feel for the people who live in the county and are having apartments put next to them. I, I understand that that's, that would be uncomfortable. However, I think growth is inevitable. And, and I feel like overall, it's, the density is less than it could be, and there are garage units, and I really like that. So overall, I, I think it's a nice project.
Okay. Brett?
Well, it meets the requirements of the CCS. We'll leave it at that.
Mr. Latham?
I've kind of stuck on one thing, and that is that I would, I would like to make a condition, you know, tentatively that it is based on the proposed configuration of the, of that, of the property lines that are proposed on this site plan, which, or, which are the 8.3 acres. And by that, I mean that I would not be interested in approving this if it was apartments right up to Highway 41. And I just want to make sure that there's not some kind of a way that that happens one way or another. But the way this is presented is excellent. I like it. I think it works very well. It's the way it needs to be laid out, and so that would be, if I made a motion, that would be my condition.
You don't get to talk, so...
Warren?
I think that we need to take into account the property owners neighboring this area. I feel for people that have open property and then other people are trespassing across it. And I think that there needs to be a fence on the other side of those garages. And by their diagram, it looks like they also have green space of some kind and trees planted along the perimeter. And I get a little bit concerned about 41 and anybody that has to walk across there. I've crossed that intersection many times, and most of the time, the pedestrian sign doesn't work. And so if we're now having 144 units and anybody trying to cross 41 at Pole Line, that's going to be a quagmire.
Yeah, I would, I would say 144 units, you know, based on what I have seen. I don't necessarily feel that's going to overload the schools based on the numbers that I've seen. And again, I think that we can all agree that at some point, growth is going to be inevitable, but that is dumping an immense amount of traffic out on Pole Line and 41. So...
Any other comment?
Can I add one more comment?
Please.
And that is yours and Mark Latham's comment as far as a condition. The 144 units could be conditioned to also the same shape and disposition of the lots being presented, so you condition the units and the lot as presented.
I appreciate that. That being said, with no other comment, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the Allen Potts special use permit adopted in the finding conclusions of conditions one through seven contained in the staff report with two additional conditions, which would be to main, provide a minimum of a six-foot fence along the east property line and, and I don't know if I'm going to word this right, make sure that the 8.5 acres proposed is of the same shape and disposition of the parcel that has been presented tonight.
Is that acceptable?
I think we can work with that. It's essentially confirming that they build it consistent with the submitted site plan.
It didn't specify the number of units or the disposition of the buildings, just the parcel itself.
So you're concerned with just the lots, not the units?
The lot, correct.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Kelly?
Hampi?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So moved. We are at one and one-half hour. So at this point, we are going to take a 10-minute recess. All right, we are back. Call the meeting back to order. And we will move on. We have got Post Falls Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, MA-16-01. John, are you presenting? We'll go ahead and call this to order.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Associate Planner, here with the City Post Falls, introducing the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, File Number MA-16-01. Due to the size of this project being fairly small, as far as the PowerPoint, I'm going to do the staff report and the intro all in one, followed by the applicant. So there's a slight modification.
All right, thank you.
The owner is Idaho Vineyard Company. The applicant's rep is Rand Wickman. Requested action is to review and recommend approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment from residential to commercial. As you see here, the site's location here, it's, this is Idaho. It's in the east side of Idaho. It's south of I-90, west of the southeast way, overpass, and just north of Fourth Avenue. Along the majority, you can see it's pretty much bound by all commercial at this location. A commercial property next to interstate properties is a fairly common occurrence. Looking at the surrounding zoning, the site, as you see, it's the hatch underneath it, it's gray. So that would be the industrial zoning designation. The vineyard property is industrial as well, to the south along Fourth, with smart code being to the west, with commercial being on the north side of I-90. Looking at the surrounding environment of what's been constructed within the area, you have Walgreens and other office, commercial-type service industries to the north, as well as just north of southeast way being commercial, the oriented service-type office facilities. And just to the east, you have a grocery store. Commercial at this location would be compatible with this type of an area and built environment and with the freeway access. We found that it would be compatible and consistent with the surrounding land uses in the area and the policies found within the comprehensive plan. The planning analysis went into a little more detail in the staff report. I didn't really want to belabor every comment in that. I commented on the highlights of the staff analysis. The engineering division, they commented in that it does not have significant impact on the city's water, water reclamation and transportation system, and that the anticipated land uses are consistent with the assumptions contained in the respective city's master plans. Decision on this by the commission is shall be recommend the approval the city council has presented. There could be modifications or a denial of the proposed future land use map. So at this time, I'd stand for any questions you have for me as part of the intro and staff report.
Any questions for either one of those pieces? Okay.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and have the applicant come up.
Commissioners and staff, good evening. My name is Rand Wickman. My address is 2992 Gotham Bay Road. That's Harrison. And it might seem like a long ways away from Post Falls. I'm here tonight happy to represent Idaho Vineyard Company. They, they own this piece, the subject parcel, as well as the parcel immediately south of it, which is probably more familiar to you. The Idaho Vineyard Mill is on the piece just south of this. This property is 11.8 acres. It is largely vacant. Most recently, it's been used as kind of overflow parking and equipment storage and things like that related to the mill. You note that little corner piece that is taken out of it, that's where the fire station is located. And so this property is no longer essential to the mill's operation. And so they're looking to move this piece into the, the next chapter, I guess, and, and put it into some other use. The folks from Idaho Vineyard are not developers. And so they're looking to position this so that it, you know, can be sold and, you know, acquired by somebody who has a, a design for this property. But in looking at it, we felt that the most appropriate use for it is commercial. The piece, it's, it's a little bit unusual in Post Falls here because if you look at the property clear from the Avista Dam all the way over to, all the way over to Highway 41, this is the only piece that fronts on the highway that's privately owned with a residential comprehensive plan designation. We think this piece should be designated commercial, as the other pieces along the interstate have been. It makes the most sense. It's not well-suited for residential development because of the, the noise from the highway. It's a high-visibility piece. It has great access in, in nearly every direction except for south. But you can go every other direction from it. And so, you know, I won't belabor the point tonight. Brief remarks are somewhat uncharacteristic for me. But I will, I will just close by saying I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And we think commercial makes sense for this piece, and we respectfully request your approval of that.
Any questions? For the applicant?
No.
No? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Kelly? Testimony, do we have any in favor?
We do not.
Any neutral?
We do not.
Any opposed?
We do not.
That being said, then there is no need for rebuttal. So we'll move right into questions for staff. Any questions in the last five minutes?
The only question I have is since it's industrial, where the plant is and it's kind of vacant lot, is there any remediation that has to be done to the soil or anything?
I've not been informed of any remediation on the soil itself. But prior to site development, I would be willing to speculate they'd probably do some sort of phase-one assessment on that prior to development.
Anything else?
During the break, Commissioner Kimball asked me to speak to you a little bit about the procedure from here on out, what happens after tonight's hearing. So our code is a little bit different on this point than most that you see for how does it move from the Planning Commission to the city council. In, in this context, there's not a hearing before the city council unless, because there's been fewer than five people testify in opposition or neutral, unless the council expressly asks to have a hearing, or the mayor directs the hearing to be held. So from here, we would be preceded to stand, to go to the mayor and/or the council and say, do you want to have a separate hearing on this? If either of them wants to, then another hearing would be held at city council on this matter. So that's kind of how the code structures this as we move forward.
And so would it be a recommendation of approval by, if that was the course they wanted to? As an advisory?
Yeah, so I suppose it would be structured as a decision, and then the, the council could revisit that and determine whether to uphold that or have another hearing and base their decision on the record that they create, I suppose, based on the record created tonight. So I think that's a long way of saying that's six of one, half a dozen of the other. It'll work either way.
All right, okay. Fair enough. Okay. Any other questions?
So I would just like to clarify, you could either move to approve or you could move to recommend approval. Is that what you're saying, either way?
Yes, I think technically under the code, it's a recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Ultimately, the council's going to look at this. We're going to ask the council, do you want to have a hearing on this? We'll also potentially present that to the mayor. Do you want to have a hearing on this? And so they have the ability to say, yeah, we want to have another hearing.
Okay, so it would still be, I recommend to approve or disapprove?
Yes.
And if they don't have a public hearing, it would go on new business for, on their agenda?
We haven't kicked that around yet, but, so they will be asked that question.
Okay. Ultimately, though, the council will be making the decision on it?
Yeah, they'll make, the council will make a decision on whether or not, how this plays out. So their decision after tonight is, do you want to have a hearing? If they say yes, we notice it up, we have a new hearing. If they say we're good with what happened to this point, that is their, that's the final decision.
Okay.
We all clear? Okay. Any other questions, clarification for John? None? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the discussion, or close the hearing, start discussion. Mr. Latham, you're sitting right here.
I'm going to start.
I'll let you start.
I'm for it. I think it makes perfect sense. It, it's a commercial district. Something's going to go in there that's a civic, commercial, whatever, kind of a use, and it's not going to be residential. It's too noisy along the highway. It has exposure and frontage, so retail, whatever it is, it would be commercial, so.
Okay. Fred?
I'm in favor of the commercial.
Okay. Nancy?
I think commercial makes sense.
Ray?
Yeah, commercial makes sense. I think if it was to be residential, that would be a mistake.
Yeah.
Especially right between the highway and a very noisy mill.
Warren?
I agree.
Okay. I would, I would agree with all that you said. So that being said, looking for a motion.
Okay, I move to recommend approval of Post Falls Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, MA-16-01. Was I on the right one?
Second? Moved and seconded. Kelly?
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Keane?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So moved. All right. Moving right along. We are going to move into the Whiskey Flat subdivision S-15-03. And we'll go ahead and start that public hearing. John to present. Are you going to introduce and?
No, the next two public hearings will be following the protocol.
Perfect.
So the property owner is Tombstone Investments LLC. The applicant's rep is Lake City Engineering, Inc. Requested action is to recommend an approval to city council for a 68-lot R1 residential development on approximately 17.36 acres. And that's an R1-zoned residential development. The general location is, as you see here, The general location is, as you see here, highlighted in red. It's centrally located, but due north, off-center, closer to Prairie than Mullen Avenue. And zooming in a little bit more, there's an infill pocket, as you see here, and so this here would be where the subdivision would occur. And currently, we've been in the process of recording an annexation for this. The black boundary is the, at the time of subdivision application, initially, we were processing the annexation. There's been verification that this annexation has been recorded at the county, so the new city boundary now would follow the outer extent here, decreasing the infill pocket. You can see that there's other single-family homes to the south of this development and to the north with larger lots to the west. And looking at the zoning designations, you have in the county, some suburban land use designations, some ag designations in the dark green with where you see the mustard-yellow type color. That would be your R1 zones, with the lighter yellow being the R1S, which is the large lot, closer to one-acre development type, single-family homes. The proposed density is 3.9 units per acre. The water would be provided by East Green Acres Irrigation District, with the sewer being provided by the city of Post Falls. In your staff report, you saw a phasing plan that looked similar to this. Phase one, where the boundary kind of went across this, it looks like a Knob Creek Court, and then a phase three over to the east along Guy Road. What the applicants, since the staff report went out, they're proposing a modification to that phasing plan. As you see here, the phase one now includes that cul-de-sac with phase two going to Guy Road. The reason why this is important and to recognize this as part of the, whatever way you go on the matter, and if it's, if it's an approval, is that how it's being presented tonight for the subdivision, that's how they're more or less obligated to develop in that phase. Now with phases, as I cited in the staff report, you saw a recognition that sometimes there's less than the number of phases or more. That's either processed through either a minor amendment through your, of the subdivision approval, or a major, depending on the extent of that, that proposed modification to the phase. So at this time, I conclude staff's introduction. Do you have any questions for me at this point in time?
Any questions? Okay, thanks. Mr. Dittman, applicant presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Shriver Way, Suite Number Four, City of Coeur d'Alene. Whiskey Flats. As before you guys, several months ago, as John had said, to request annexation and zoning of a portion of this property. As you recall, we annexed this piece, this portion of the property here a few months ago. This part of it was already in. So the property is now zoned R1, as John had indicated on his map, so all of the dark yellow is R1 zoning, the lighter yellow is your R1S, larger lot zoning. So as you can see, this project fits very well with the surrounding subdivisions to the south and surrounding subdivisions to the north. This large pocket that you see here that's not shaded is, as John had alluded to, that's the county pocket that hasn't been annexed into the city yet. What we're presenting tonight is a 68-lot subdivision on about 17 and a half acres. Average lot size is about 8,100 square feet, which is very similar to what's adjacent to the south and what's neighboring to the north. What's unique about this project is at the intersection of Grange and Guy, as you know, there are two railroad, unsignalized, at-grade railroad crossings. That's not good. This project, we are requesting to vacate portions of Guy Road and eliminate this Guy Road crossing. We've worked with staff to do that, and I know staff's been, Rob and Bill have been working with the Union Pacific Railroad a little bit on closing that crossing. That's a good thing. We're going to take, as you can see, this is a schematic of improving the Grange Crossing, so we're going to take bits and pieces of the Guy Road Crossing, some of the concrete platforms and whatnot, reuse them if we can down on the Grange Crossing to improve that crossing. Again, that's a good thing. There's a detailed comprehensive analysis in the staff report. It's four pages. It's quite detailed, so I won't get into that because I'm assuming you've all read the staff report. There are 15 conditions in the staff report. I think we agree with those 15 conditions. I was going to get into some discussion on the phasing change, but John has already done that, so I won't discuss that further unless there's some need for clarification or, or anything on that. I guess that's all I have to say. I'll answer any questions.
Questions for applicant?
Does the issue with the railroad right-ofways and Guy Road, and does that really, are we approving anything with that, or this is strictly about the subdivision?
Strictly about?
Not about anything having to do with the railroad, correct?
Correct. Part of the subdivision is a request for you guys to agree in concept to vacate portions of Guy Road and not allow Guy Road to go through. It's discussed in the staff report that that will require a separate council action to actually vacate that right away.
Okay, okay. That was my question, Drew. Yeah.
I've got a question for Drew. So, the change in phasing puts you above the 30-lot threshold for that magic 30-lot fire access. Are you going to extend Tennessee Avenue out to Guy Road or Bourbon Place South? I'm looking specifically at condition number nine. It seems to have addressed that.
It has, and we've, and we've had discussions with Gerald Archer about that. That 30-lot caveat, in Gerald's opinion, and he's emailed staff, and so I know there's records and correspondence, that 30-lots number applies to standalone subdivisions. In his mind, if this next phase is going to have an access, or if there's going to be a secondary access in a future phase, then that 30-lot maximum doesn't apply. And that, and that is part of the reason why we've changed this boundary, there's actually 37 lots in phase one. But we've worked that, worked that out with Gerald Archer, and he's, I believe, emailed John some emails about that.
Okay. So that, I guess that would mean condition number nine is irrelevant, then?
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. John, staff report?
So planning staff reviewed the proposed subdivision. The lots meet and exceed the minimum lot dimensional standards. In an R1 zoning district, the minimum lot size is 6,500 square feet. The 3.9 lots are dwelling units per acre is less than what's maximum allowed of five units per acre in the R1 zoning district. Obviously, we discussed it's intended to be developed in three phases. Improvements to Chase Road and Grange Avenue will include sidewalks. Those will be important for that area because it's going to add some pedestrian connectivity and access for that area. Engineering Division has reviewed this in regards to transportation, and that access onto Grange Avenue from lots one and 63 shall be prohibited. What that means is if I go back to this diagram, that would be this lot right here and this lot right here on the proposed subdivision due to proximity to other infrastructure. Access from Chase Road will also be prohibited, and a common fence shall be installed along Chase Road and the Union Pacific Railroad with the development of any such appropriate subject phase. A homeowners association will need to be established, and that's for the maintenance of the swells and landscaping along the right-ofways. And the project, and you've seen within your staff report, is going to be coordinated with the Union Pacific Railroad. Vacation of Guy Road, as mentioned. That there is going to be a separate council action, and that within the proposed phase two, Grange Avenue improvements should be completed to the project's eastern boundary. The roadway cross-sections are going to be in conformance with city design standards, and that the roadway layout would allow for continuation of adjoining subdivisions and properties in a manner that would support compatible land uses. In regards to water reclamation, facilities are available adjacent to the property, and there is sufficient capacity for the proposed development, and the proposed layout appears to be in conformance with the city's water reclamation master plan, and that the elevations of that would be verified at the time of submittal construction drawings. In regards to project grading, it would be completed to meet the city's minimum design standards for manhole depths and cover sewer laterals at property line, and that subject systems serving existing structures identified for removal with the project will need to be abandoned in conformance with the Panhandle Health District. In regards to water, it is going to be provided by East Green Acres Irrigation District. Other city departments, we had none, but as stated, we did receive comments from fire. We didn't actually get, I didn't see an email, but I know we did get verbal confirmation of that. Also, the Union Pacific Railroad, that's within the PC-1, within the staff report. They did comment, and they did want to bring light, to light that the train volumes near the project may increase in the future, and that their corridor is vital to them, and it's a growing rail corridor. So I'd stand for any questions you have for me at this time.
Warren, anything? Questions? All right, thank you very much. Testimony, Kelly, do we have anyone in favor of the project?
We do not.
Okay. I think it does need to be noted, if I'm not mistaken, that we did have, you would see in your packets that there was one, Richard Kirsch, who was in favor. Any neutral?
Yes.
Okay. We do have one who is neutral that does wish to speak, Julie Stratton. If you'll come up, name, address, three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Julie Stratton. I live at 2598 North Abigail in the Meadows, across the street from Chase. Actually, you answered my question about sidewalks. That's a big concern. I see so many families walking, women with strollers and little kids, because the stops, the sidewalk ends there at the railroad tracks, and so I'm happy to hear that that's going to continue all the way through, hopefully to Fisher, so then there can be access if people want to go over to the park at Howland Grange or further on. And then the other question I had or concern was just about more green space in that particular area, because there's a lot of houses to the north of this development as well, and even further on to the golf course. And so will there be anything developing around that, whether it's a micro park or just something for people to get out with their dogs in, as well as the kids? And then the last thing was, should I be concerned at all about more houses going on to the East Green Acres irrigation system? If there's going to be an HOA, I wonder, like most HOAs, that people have to have irrigation, they have to have grass, and so what will that do to the irrigation system for the rest of the community out there? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And lastly, Kelly, anyone opposed?
We do.
We do have one who wishes to speak in opposition, Jennifer Johnson.
I'm Jennifer Johnson. I live at 3340 North Serenity, so my cows are going away. I love looking out at the animals across the way. I have a lot of the same concerns that Julie has. We're neighbors, and so my concern was Chase right now has quite a bit of traffic on it, and it really is kind of a cow, when you consider the number of cars, it's kind of a Cow Path-style road. It's not particularly wide. It just kind of runs into the greenery on either side, so with this group of housing, houses going in, and I know that there have been requests for other large groups of housing going in, it's going to add a huge amount of wear and tear on Chase. And I'm thinking Chase is not wide enough, there's not enough room there to really widen it for ongoing and future development. What are the plans there for considering the additional pressure on the infrastructure? Again, I was glad to hear that there's going to be sidewalks. That's, I have the same concerns. I watch people with, you know, baby strollers walking along in the dirt and the grass. It's just not safe. The other thing, you know, the railroad thing, that's interesting. Those, are we going to be able to shut off the horns on those trains by reworking that, those train crossings? I'm curious about that. If there's anything that you as planning and zoning, if you have any pull for minimizing that, I'm far enough away that it's not as bad, but I know there's a lot of houses that it has got to rattle their doors and windows. So if, if there's something that can be done in that regard, I would very much appreciate that. But I, my main concern is Chase, are you looking to the future to widen it enough to accommodate ongoing and future growth and additional traffic? Opposed? I don't know that I am. I just want questions answered, and I didn't know the answers to those questions, so I wrote that down. If certain things are addressed, you know, there is growth and people need houses, and so if you can take care of some of those, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dittman, do you want to address any of those, sir?
Again, for the record, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, railroad tracks. Unfortunately, we have several railroad tracks that go through the city of Post Falls. They're not going to go away, so we have to deal with it. Like I said earlier, eliminating the crossing is a good thing. That eliminates a horn blast. Can we make them all go away? No, it's not going to happen, unfortunately, so we have to deal with it. As I said, we are going to do improvements to that crossing on Grange. Sidewalks, that will help with some of the concerns they had about people walking. The question, East Green Acres, we've received approval from East Green Acres. We've been in front of their board last week, got approval. There's, there shouldn't be any issues with water rights or irrigation or any of that stuff. East Green Acres has approved the project. Chase Road, we will be widening Chase Road out along our frontage, and if we can get me back up to the, I'll show you. Thank you. A little tough to see here, but we will be widening Chase Road out along the entire frontage of the project in conformance with the city's transportation master plan and their approved street sections. Don't think I have anything else to add. Any questions for me?
I guess I'm really concerned about the horn noise from the trains, and there's many people that have bought lots and built houses and then find that the horn noise is, they can't live there. And is there anything that you can do to let the people know how loud it's going to be?
As I said, the train tracks are there. They're not going away. The horn blasts are required. That's, they have to blast the horn at the railroad crossings. I don't know if there's anything we can do to let homeowners know, other than the fact that the tracks are there. You can see them, it's visible. They're open and notorious. They're there, so I'm not sure if there's anything we can do to let homeowners know. I wouldn't know how to do that.
Put it in your brochure.
I put, if I was in charge of the brochures, maybe.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Drew. Appreciate it. Any questions for staff that were not already answered?
I can comment on the, the green space?
Yes.
The subdivisions, we don't require any open space requirements as part of subdivision. I have spoke with the Parks Department, so that is an area they're looking...
I have spoke with the Parks Department, so that is an area they're looking at, potentially attaining some, there's no guarantee to that, but it's been recognized. So if future subdivisions occur, there may or may not be other green space. It all depends on how it ends up developing in the future.
Okay. Good point. Anybody else? Okay. Go ahead and close the Whiskey Flat subdivision hearing, and open for discussion. Warren?
I guess I just really have to go along with the horn noise from the trains. I think that it's, to put residential areas there without having a disclaimer and some type of sound buffer, or some type of insulation, is really setting homeowners up for a very brutal surprise, because there are a lot of people that can't get any kind of sleep at all along those areas. I would, you know, much rather have said, seen that stay agricultural, so that there's some more space between the tracks and residential.
Fred?
I think it's a good project. I like the layout. With regards to green space, again, I mean, there are park impact fees, and if I did my math right, it's going to be at least $75,000 generated for a park impact. So money from each building permit going to the parks will generate about $75,000, so that the Parks Department can buy property in the area and build a park, which is exactly what that's for. With regards to the train noise, the only suggestion I could make to anybody who lives out there and is, doesn't like it, would be to contact your Senator, US Senator, and ask them to support a quiet zone, which would mean that they'd have to provide funding to signalize every single one of those intersections so that they're safe. Also, if you buy next to a railroad track, you're going to have to expect train noise. That's just the way it is. And I think, lastly, condition number nine, I'd like to float it out there that, I think we should probably change that, condition number nine, to a second access point to the subdivision shall be provided as required by Cootney County Fire and Rescue.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, I have no issues with the subdivision. I personally don't care for cul-de-sacs, but that's beyond the scope here. As far as the railroad tracks, I know that there's acoustical analyses for flyover zones for airports, things like that, and that's for jet aircraft and military aircraft and things like that, and there's been studies and all of this stuff, but there's nothing for trains that I know of, and I'm actually know a bit about that, I guess, but there's certain decibel levels that you take homes down to certain levels, but nothing, unfortunately nothing for railroads and train tracks, so not much you can do there. Other than that, I think it's a, I think it's good. It's a good layout. Makes sense.
I support the project. Just a couple of thoughts on the train noise. I've lived up in that area for about 20 years now, and I guess you kind of get used to it after a while, even though sometimes the whistles are a little bit louder than others, and I did make some inquiries about that. They're under some really tight federal regulations pertaining to when they have to pull the horn, and also how long the horn has to be, and if they don't, they can get fined quite a bit of money, and they do have people out there at different intersections checking to make sure the trains and the conductors do what they're supposed to do with those intersections, so I'll just leave it at that.
I like the project. Don't have any issues with it.
Okay. I think it is a good project. That particular railroad line, is that the one that's owned by Mr. Buffett? Is there a way of contacting him, or that might be the other one? Okay. Looking for a motion?
In the case of Whiskey Flat Subdivision, case number S-15-03, I move to recommend approval, adopting the findings and conclusions. The staff report, conditions one, adopting conditions one through 15, amending condition nine to read, "A second access point to the subdivision shall be provided as required by Cootney County Fire and Rescue."
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Kelly?
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Bean?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Ostermeyer?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Motion carried?
All right, so a move that brings us to last, but certainly not least, our public hearing, Miller Landing Subdivision, S-15-04. Go ahead and call that public hearing. Order Mr. John Mannely to present.
Ask him.
The property owner is Miller Development Group, LLC. The applicant's rep is Lake City Engineering, Inc. The requested action is for a recommendation of approval to city council for a 27-lot R1 zoning property for residential development on approximately 6.8 acres. Shows up fairly small, actually, on this map, but that little red square there, that's about where the proposed subdivision's at. So zooming in a bit, you can see here on the southeast corner of the Idaho 15th, 16th intersection. The 27-lot proposal is south of 16th. There would be a remnant lot, I believe that it comes out to about 0.86 acres that would also be created with this subdivision. Surrounding zoning, as you see here, is R1 to the, to the west, and to the north, you have CCS, Community Commercial Services, to the south. The pink is the Limited Commercial, LC. In the county there, the county pocket, as part of this infill area, is Ag Suburban, zoned in the county. And you can see a mix to the south of 12th, being R3, which is your apartment, multifamily type zone. RMHP is your mobile home park zoning designation, and in R2 is your medium density zoning designation. Proposed density would be four units or lots per acre. The water would be provided by the city Post Falls, and the sewer provided by the city Post Falls. Within the staff report, there was a finding that, regarding to buffering between commercial and residential, and in the condition to satisfy that finding, there was the proposal to that buffer yard be put within a tract of land. The intent of that was from kind of a simplistic means to, for enforcement, you'd have a homeowners association, you have one point of contact, you have a tract of land, so that'd be one method of dealing with it, as far as getting this buffer between residential and commercial. So the proposal from staff now is to modify the finding, and that is, alternatively, the commission may want to consider requiring that the landscape buffer be constructed in accordance with the code, but through, in an easement, and so, and then we'd then modify condition 10 from whatever you guys decide tonight before council. So it's a little confusing, but it's a little bit of a rundown there on that, that commercial and residential and the whole, there's a couple ways of dealing with the buffer, the So at this point, it would conclude staff's introduction of the proposed subdivision. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
No questions? Nope, none at this time. Mr. Dittman, I believe you know what to do.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Schreiber Way, City Accord Lane. It's been a long time. Here we are, an infill project, Idaho Street, 16th Avenue. We brought the annexation before you guys, oh, four months ago, maybe. Got an R1 zoning designation, as John had pointed out, very similar map to what he had. All of the yellow is R1. We're surrounded on the west and the north by R1. There's a little bit of commercial to the south, a little medical center there. I'll discuss that here a little further in a minute. 27 lots, as you can see there, 7.6 acres. There is a remainder lot, this little piece that got left over when the city realigned 16th slash 15th Avenue. There was a little sliver of remainder parcel left here. We're not quite sure what we're going to do with that yet, so we're going to leave it as a remainder parcel. But we have 27 lots down here. Sewer and water will be provided by the city of Post Falls. There's, as mentioned in your staff report, there's no capacity issues there. So the landscape buffer that John was talking about, I'd like to clarify that a little bit. Because of this commercially zoned property here to the south, your codes and your ordinance requires a 15-foot buffer between residential and commercial uses. There is no buffer that was put there when the commercial went in. Not sure how that happened, it was a while ago, but we've got to deal with that. What staff is suggesting, and we understand and are willing to do it, is to have a 15-foot buffer here along that commercial. The issue with putting it into a tract, as John had alluded to, there's an existing fence there right now that belongs to the commercial property. Your buffer requirements require a 15-foot landscape buffer and another fence. We don't want to do that, obviously. We don't want to have a fence, 15 feet of landscaping, and another fence of no man's land that won't get maintained, could, you know, we don't want to do it. So we want the ability to work with staff either through an easement, or somehow get creative and work with staff to do it. We're willing to do the buffer, we know the buffer's needed. A tract with a fence and a fence is probably not the most appropriate way to do that. I think John's suggestion of changing the wording in that condition will help us, and allow us to do that, to work with staff and figure that out. That was going to be my suggestion, is we change conditions 10 and 11, as John had discussed. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions?
Oh, I do have one. How big are those lots, average?
Average lot size is about 8,200 square feet.
Okay.
About the same size as the previous subdivision I just presented them. Anything else? Thank you.
Planning staff's review is that the lots meet and exceed the minimum lot dimensional standards of 6,500 square feet. The four lots per acre is less than the maximum allowed, the five dwelling units per acre. And it's to note that this proposal is intended to be developed in a single phase. The subdivision is in an infill island within the city Post Falls. Engineering has commented, and in regards to transportation, is that the proposed roadway cross-sections are in conformance with the city design standards, and the roadway layout would allow for the continuation to adjoining properties in a manner that would support compatible land use development. Driveway access onto Idaho Street and 16th Avenue shall be prohibited. In regards to water reclamation, facilities are available to serve the property from Medical Court, located to the south, and there's sufficient capacity for the proposed development. In regards to water, the sizing and layout of the proposed domestic water systems is acceptable, and the city Post Falls has the capacity to provide necessary service for the anticipated land use and fire suppression requirements. Regards to other city departments, there's none to report. Generally, if there's no comments, that means there's no issues. They generally comment if there's a concern. At this point, I'd stand for any questions you have for me regarding this proposed subdivision.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly, any testimony in favor?
We do not.
Any neutral?
We do not.
Any in opposition?
We do not.
That being said, there's no need for rebuttal. Nothing else to add? So we open it up. Any questions for staff? There were just none, so. Still none. I'm afraid you have one?
Yeah. On the buffer zone between the commercial and the residential, how long ago was that commercial developed?
I don't have the actual date. I know it's been there for some time.
Was that an error on their part, and it just wasn't?
Presumably, I would say the determination was because it was a county area that hasn't been undeveloped along Idaho Road, that you had commercial going up, that they more than likely determined that it would stay a similar type built environment proceeding north on Idaho, therefore didn't require it at the time. But that'd be presumptuous, but.
Okay. So it wasn't really an oversight then, it was just the way it was back then?
That's what I would conclude.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions for staff, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and open it up for discussion. Fred?
Makes sense. It's a good project. I like the infill.
Nancy?
I agree. I think it'll be nice to have that developed, that parcel in there.
Warren?
I agree. It's a site that needs to be developed.
Yeah, I'm excited to see it get developed, and I agree with staff and the applicant
that the buffer yard should be in an easement instead of a long lethal tract.
I agree too, because I guess one thing to point out is that this residential is coming, not the zoning, but the development is coming later, so in other words, that home is going to be cleaned off, and that'll be all new homes. In other words, the people are the latecomers, and they have full knowledge of what's next door to them. It's a little different if their property rights were infringed upon, and there was a commercial development going next door to somebody's backyard. I would see that very different, so there's, I see no problem with that.
Very nice. I agree, including with the buffer zone. So that being said, we would entertain a motion at this time.
I would move to recommend approval for Miller's Landing Subdivision, case number S-15-04, adopting the findings and conclusions found on the staff report, amending, and adopting the alternative finding number 12, as presented in the staff presentation, and amending conditions 10 and 11 to place the 15-foot landscape buffer into an easement instead of a tract.
Okay. Nice work.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Kelly.
Kimball?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ostermeyer?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So moved, all right. Motion carried, which leads us to new business. Any new business?
None.
No new business? Any staff comments?
Late.
It is late. We can have the crowd wake up, it's about time to close. Commission comments, anything for the good of the order?
Nothing.
Great. Wonderful spending the evening with you guys. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
There we are, adjourned.